Good match of your spurs. You're very coordinated.
Evening. Welcome, everyone, to a special meeting June 4th, 2019 of the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board. Please join me for the pledge.
(inaudible)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. One item on the agenda tonight. I'm going to read it into the little line. It's in a minute. It's Hudson Heritage's review of a secret findings and determination of a consistency for a proposed modified development master plan for a total 750 residential units, 350,000 square foot new commercial space, and adaptive reuse of the administrative building main wing of 80,000 square feet, and five other structures. It's also a site plan public hearing for Phase 1 development consisting of 134 residential units in four buildings with 273 parking spaces and a total of 193,300 square foot commercial space in 16 buildings with 1,126 parking spaces, related streets, and utility infrastructure, and a preliminary major subdivision public hearing for a total of 16 lots on the site and roads to be dedicated to the town. It's at 3532 North Road, US Route 9, Zone HRDB, Historic Revitalization Development District, 156.19 acres. And the secret findings for a Type 1 action were issued December 6th, 2017 by the Town Board, EFG Saber Heritage SC and LLC, formerly known as EFG Area Heritage LLC, for the owners. Welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Please, you know, go tell us what you've been doing since the last meeting.
It's Marty Berger with EFG Saber SC LLC and Peter Wise with Al Bello. Thank you for having us this evening. Hopefully, we'll be able to receive our final site plan approval and subdivision and move on. So, we have been, since the last time we met, dotting the i's and crossing the t's with the town's staff to make sure that the findings and resolutions were, as we've all expected and agreed, that the plans were in sufficient form and format. And I believe that we're now ready to receive the conditional site plan and subdivision approval. It's clear as to what we need to do to proceed forward under those agreements. We're prepared to do so. On the site, I'm pleased to tell you that the first three buildings have received clearance on asbestos at this point in time, and the demolition crews are actually on-site. So, shortly, they will be proceeding with the demolition, and we've coordinated that with Andy Lern and our staff to make sure that the appropriate SWIP and everything else is in place. So, that's going to be starting. And yesterday, they received the approval to start the asbestos removal on the Cheney Building, which is the next building, the last of the big four buildings on the south side to start coming, to get cleaned up and then demolished. So, that's the primary activities on-site. I also know that our staff and your staff, including Andy Lern, met this morning to discuss coordination of site activities, and part of that was that, I believe, Andy was prepared to close out the tree clearing permit and release the bond. So, that was successfully completed as well. So, that's really the site activity. You know, we are proceeding, continuing to successfully respond to tenant inquiries and interest, which is great. I was telling Yvonne earlier that we received an inquiry from a hotel operator that does high-end luxury hotels and only focuses on historic buildings of importance. We had a very good one-hour meeting, you know, following his review of the confirmation, and they're going to be hopefully coming back to us. And we actually had a group yesterday come through that professional organization, private corporation that wants, is interested in renovating the director's house. So, I was actually, walked through it yesterday for the first time ever, and I was quite surprised how nice it was on the inside. It was in good shape, relatively speaking.
Yeah.
So, things are moving well. We're looking forward to successfully finishing tonight and proceeding with our plans.
Great, thanks. It's good that the... Which three buildings have you abated already?
The Snow, Ryan Hall, and the Rec... I believe it's called the Rec Building.
The rec building where the pool was in.
Yes, yeah.
No, no, no.
These are the three primary buildings that are east of the Cheney Building.
Taking on Cheney is next, then, I guess. All right. Thank you. Eric?
Oh, just one other thing. We also have, as you know, we've cleaned out the administration building, taken all the fire debris out, and we're about two-thirds finished with the architectural and structural designs to rebuild the roof, which we hopefully will be able to get done sooner rather than later. So, the plans are fairly far along, and hopefully, we can get that work going.
There's a temporary roof you're moving along with the...
No, this will be a permanent roof.
With a permanent, yeah, that's right. Good. All right. Eric?
Staff have worked closely with the consultants on preparing draft findings and resolutions for your consideration tonight, and you have the comments and the recommendations of those consultants. I don't know if Dave, as counsel, may want to just introduce where we are and the potential outcomes. Do you want to maybe summarize that?
Sure. So, at the last meeting, staff and I were instructed to prepare draft resolutions to complete the process and all the actions that are before this board. We've spent the last month going back and forth and, as I think Marty said, dotting the i's and crossing all the t's. There are, I know you've seen the draft, so there are many of those i's and t's in those documents. The actions before your board tonight would be an adoption of secret findings as an involved agency in the secret review of the overall project. That's the rather long document before you, going through each of the identified potential areas of environmental concern that were initially identified back when the scoping session started in front of the Town Board when they were lead agency, and goes all the way through to, you know, the meeting today of are there potential environmental impacts? And if so, what are the magnitude? And if they're significant, is there sufficient mitigation incorporated into the plans that would either avoid or mitigate to the maximum extent practicable the identified impact? And in your board's case, you're also looking at whether any of the modifications to the development master plan or the new information about the site plan, about the project that you now have come to light because you've kind of, you've dived into the weeds of the site plan, whether any of that information has identified new impacts that were not originally identified and studied or mitigated, adequately mitigated. Staff and your board and everybody involved, including the public, have spent the last year or so evaluating that, and it's staff's belief that there are no environmental impacts associated with the project that weren't either identified previously and have not been adequately mitigated. And so, a large part of the finding statement that's before you does adopt the findings of the Town Board and also incorporates much of the, all of the mitigation that was identified by the Town Board in the Town Board's finding statement, and then where necessary to either deal with new information or project modifications identifies additional mitigation measures. Once this board completes the secret process, it's then able to take the other actions that is within its jurisdiction at this point. One would be a determination of consistency that the modified development master plan that we've been reviewing for the past year or so is consistent with the intent of the adopted master plan, the plan that was adopted by the Town Board. We spent a lot of the time in our earlier meetings really diving into that issue, and the board, as you probably remember, took what would characterize as sort of a straw pole just to indicate which way you were leaning. At the time, the board felt that this new modified, or, sorry, the modified development master plan is, in fact, consistent with the developed master plan that was adopted by the, or approved by the Town Board. The resolution that's before the board tonight reflects that finding and also lays out the reasons for why it would be consistent. Two would be your site plan approval for Phase 1 of the project, and you have a fairly long resolution as well that takes you through all the criteria for site plan approval, not only in your town code or in the zoning code, but also related to the Hudson, the HRDB district because there are specific criteria as well in that district, and lays out why, based on all of our previous discussions with staff and with this board, as to why the project would meet all of that criteria and the issuance of site plan approval, subject to various conditions that are identified in the memorandum of the consultants, of your planning consultant, traffic consultant, engineering, et cetera, items that need to be satisfied before the chairman would sign the actual site plan. And then finally, before the board, is a resolution of approval for a preliminary subdivision plat approval because the site will be subdivided into 16 lots, or is being proposed at this time to be subdivided into 16 lots. The first step in that process is a preliminary approval of the subdivision plat. Then the applicant, if the plat is, the preliminary plat is approved, the applicant will then have to satisfy various conditions also identified in the memorandum from your planners, as well as go to the Department of Health, et cetera, and then come back with a final plat. So, those actions are all before the board tonight.
All right, thanks, David. It's one of the large projects in the town, so wanted to make sure we're careful going through all the details, so appreciate that.
Carl, I'll just mention also, I imagined you're going to go to the consultants, but just the board, all of the issues that have been central to board discussion in recent months, having to do with traffic mitigation, how the historic structures are dealt with, infrastructure in the town, have each been dealt with in the, by the respective consultants?
Yes.
And the conditions for how it will be handled are in their, are in their reviews, including the, including the comments raised by staff in recent months. Those have also been folded into their reviews.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks, Eric. Before we get into some additional consultant discussions, I'd move that we open the public hearing for site plan and subdivision.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Let's see, we have one person signed up so far. Colleen Graff, come on down and speak at this hearing.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of it. I mean, I know I go by there and I see all the trees come down and everything. My first concern...
Can you sit down, please, so the microphone will record direct, be on the record.
It's a lot different than when I used to come here. So, like I said, I didn't know all this was going on until, like, probably last month. I see all the trees coming down up there. One thing that I'm wondering about, you said something about some hotel chain that's really fancy. Does this mean that this is not going to be affordable housing? It's going to be, like, for people that have money? Or is it going to be, like, senior housing or no?
There's a mix of various housing types in here of apartments and hotels, hopefully reuse the main building up top.
But I'm talking about affordable housing. There is no affordable housing in the town.
None of the, none of the units are designated as affordable housing. There is a mix of housing types, but not...
That doesn't make sense.
Okay.
That makes no sense in the town. When is the town going to start doing something for seniors? Now? I'm not living in the city of Poughkeepsie. Now, who do I go to to find out about that? So, they're going to put all these big houses, or whatever they're going to put, and not going to worry about seniors?
I didn't say that. I believe there is discussion about some housing that's targeted for seniors.
I mean, affordable seniors, not, like, people that have money.
Right, so I'm just...
Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't know what the market rates will be for it at the time, but it's, there'll be a section on senior housing as well as housing types and apartments.
But you're not going to tell them it's not affordable?
There will not be any, there will not be any single-family homes, so it'll be more...
I don't mean single-family, I mean affordable housing in an apartment.
We understand. Yep.
Yes or no?
There's nothing that's going to be, you know, income limited, let's put it that way. It's a mark, it's called a market rate.
That's going to be, that's a huge place. Three of my friends used to work there. I know how that place is, how big it is, and I think this is ridiculous, that you don't have any kind of affordable housing.
There's, I mean, there's other affordable housing in the town and various other places, so...
No, there's not.
Well, there's another project under construction that's due down by...
Okay.
You have any further comments?
Some of the historic homes that are on the site? Some of the historic homes are you going to leave up?
The director's residence, which is the historic home on the, right near Route 9, that you see there, is going to be redone. There's a lot of the buildings were destroyed with the fires and vandalism.
Well...
So, we're keeping whatever we can.
So, in other words, no public input into affordable housing? I mean, that's, that's a humongous place. They can't put a section. You're saying it's a different lot to whatever you said? Something like that?
It's subdivided into 16 parcels, but there's various things...
Subdivision, sorry, I'm not paying attention.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be a grocery store and a gym and a daycare and all kinds of stuff, so it's a big project.
And actually, Carl, just a clarification that there's subdivision, and right now, the board is considering Phase 1, which is mixed use, and it does have four apartment buildings. They are not designated as affordable. Phase 2 is a number of lots, and the, whatever type of dwelling units are going to be there, it's primarily attached units, there are no single-family homes.
I'm not talking about single-family, I'm talking about affordable apartments.
I understand. I'm just letting you know that there will be a mixture of types of housing. Again, nothing has been designated affordable, but that doesn't mean that...
Do you think someone could maybe look into that?
We, I mean, we could discuss it with the developer in a future meeting because right now, we're approving the Phase 1, which is mainly the commercial, the grocery store and some restaurants and stuff, and then he'll be coming, he'll be coming back in the future for another phase for, up on the hill.
And how many years do you think this, will I be alive then? I don't know. Probably not.
It's a multi-year project because it's, because there's a lot of construction.
Five, six, seven years, eight?
Something along those lines, yeah.
So, who, I know this has nothing to do with the, this whole site plan, but is there anyone in this, this place can tell me where to go for affordable housing, if you want to live on the street?
Maybe good to bring up with the Town Board because they're overall, we just, we have, we only go legally what's on the parcel and what the developer's doing. We can't make it developers give us affordable housing, so the Town Board can zone certain areas to different things.
Well, I'm hoping being, I'm probably the only one here saying something about it, that they maybe, somebody listens.
Okay.
Because I really don't want to live on the street, and I don't want to live in the city of Poughkeepsie.
It just hasn't been brought up before, so thanks for your comments.
All right. And I also know there's a lot of stuff buried there because I have three friends that work there, so I'm sure when they start digging, they'll find a lot of stuff.
Yep, they've been, it's a lot of work on this site. Does anyone else wish to comment tonight on this project? Come on down.
I participate with the Town of Poughkeepsie Historic Commission, and I know we submitted several comments prior to this meeting, and it sounds like we're probably going to, you're probably going to be moving to going ahead with approving the site plan and the subdivision and all of that tonight, but I just wanted to know, I mean, we had some comments specifically about the subdivision. I didn't know if those would be addressed. Our, one of our concerns was that having the Phase 2 area subdivided now would preclude some reuse of those buildings in the future or just general changes to what the final plan will be for the Phase 2 area, and I just didn't know if we were going to go ahead and approve the preliminary subdivision plan tonight if... You had said that there would be some conditions that need to be satisfied before coming up with the final subdivision plat, but I didn't know what those conditions are and if there is the possibility that some of Phase 2 won't be subdivided at this time.
Well, the intention is to do the subdivision for the entirety of parcel, and I, we did look at your comments. There are some buildings that, you know, would need to be, that are where roadways and infrastructure are going to go, and those will be removed, but the six buildings that have always been talked about being preserved are being preserved in the project, and that hasn't changed.
But when it comes to Phase 2, there will be a separate site plan approval of those. So, at that time, there's the possibility, however long that may be from now, that things may have changed and all of a sudden, maybe another building or two could be saved. And at that point, then, would we have to go through the subdivision again?
The subdivision wouldn't preclude us from doing that. The site plan, the layout of Phase 2 is something that will need to be approved by this board. Then we have to go, well, we haven't received a site plan for Phase 2 yet, so there, you know, there is a conceptual idea, right, which is in the development master plan, but we recognize that the details of that site plan need to be worked on, will be worked on by the planning board with the applicant, with public input at the time that they come back to, to propose something for Phase 2.
And we're not trying to do anything now that will preclude them doing any additional research and saving...
I just wanted to be sure that this wouldn't create some, you know, legal or whatever time barrier by subdividing that area now, that if, if, how, what would be the process if we wanted, if you wanted to change the subdivision up in the Phase 2 area?
The subdivision addresses the location of property lines, the site plan addresses the disposition of buildings and improvements on the land.
Right, I understand that.
So, the subdivision doesn't have much bearing on the retention or, on the retention or removal of the structures. The site plan does.
Correct, but I'm assuming that the, I mean, there was no good map that shows, like, what the, you know, conceptual site plan is overlaid on what the subdivision, proposed subdivision lines are. So, I wasn't 100% sure of what the reasons were for dividing up that Phase 2 area into, I don't remember how many, maybe six-ish parcels, and I presume it's...
Part of it, they get the roads set up, set up for the town roads to go through, and it's because they have to bring in water and sewer and such down through the, through what's going to become permanent town roads, but...
The other part of your question I think you could answer is that the subdivision could also be amended in the future if there were, if there, if there were a need to move lot lines to ownership. I mean, that is something that could be, it's not fixed forever.
That's what I was getting at. I didn't know what that process would be, if it's time-consuming, if it requires, you know, additional, like, monetary, you know, from the developer or anything like that. I wouldn't want to impose that on anyone and have someone say, "Oh, I'm sorry, we've already subdivided it this way, we don't want to change anything now."
Yeah, we've had projects that have changed over the course as, as the project moves along, especially a big project.
Just want to make sure that that's understood as one of our numerous concerns, but, because that's one thing that affects things tonight, I wanted to clarify.
Any other comments?
That's all.
All right.
Thank you. Well, I guess the only other final thing was, again, if tonight it is decided that everything's going to be, there's going to be a resolution and everything's signed off on, will there still be an opportunity for the developer's consultant to respond to each of our concerns that the Historic Commission had?
Well, you have it all in writing in the...
Correct.
So, they have to respond to all the conditions before, even if, when we give an approval, if we give an approval tonight, it'd be a conditional approval, such that they have to satisfy all those conditions, all those comments before I sign the plans that they can go ahead.
Okay. I think I wasn't 100% sure of the process, so thank you for clarifying.
Sure. Does anyone else wish to comment?
I just ask one more question.
Sure.
Whoever the developers are, are they going to...
If to come up to...
Can you come up and use the mic again?
The comments I made, I'm wondering if whoever's doing this is going to comment on what I said. That's all.
They may or may not. It's, you know, it's a forum for giving, for giving comments, but...
So, in other words, I go to town, court meeting to find out about affordable housing or something.
That'd be another, that'd be a good venue as well. Does anyone else wish to comment? Come on up, Yvonne.
Good evening. Yvonne Lobby with the Town Historic Preservation Commission, and a couple things. I wanted to, one, let you know and thank Marty and the development, developers for letting Preservation Works go to the site and do the photo shoot of the exterior of the buildings. We had 17 people come and volunteer their time to come up and take photographs of the exteriors. It took us from sunrise to almost sunset. We pretty much had to get kicked off the property. We're still processing the photos, but we're diligent in the way the formatting is and the note-taking, so I'm confident that we'll exceed their expectations.
Great.
Yes, it was good. That said, I also thank Marty for being transparent with the Historic Commission, John Pennin and myself, and working with us and trying to pick our brains. With the, I'd like to ask, though, and I'm not sure if it's possible, but now that the buildings have been abated prior to their demolition, if we can get in and get interiors of the abated buildings? It is important. I do believe, you know, the, the way, the, it serves a part of the mental health history. There's, it's not uncommon to have this cataloging. This is why Shippo asks for it. So, I'll leave that there.
Good to have it documented, I guess.
Then...
But some of the buildings are unsafe with the pancake floors and such, so...
Absolutely understandable, but the ones that have been abated are doable.
Yeah.
The, I think, to reiterate or to go back to what Stephanie was saying about the subdivision, I, I think the idea, what she's trying to convey, and I feel the same way, is that we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves or the developer with the subdivision of the Phase 2. If another developer, or an interested party comes along and says, "Oh, you know, I'm going to need this amount of space to build my whatever on there," and it crosses a subdivided line, I think that's where we're getting. You know, we don't want to get limited to these boundaries and prevent creative thinking and possible reuse. And I think that's it. So, and I did want to confirm that you received the commission's comments. Okay, good. And I think that is it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Yvonne.
Wait, one more thing. To touch on this woman's comments, there is an element here where I think the town could step up and try to be more expressive to its residents, whether that is utilizing the email blasts more profoundly to the, the people who sign up for the email blast, the town email, email blast. Eric looks at me like he doesn't know what that is.
Yep.
Okay, and then...
Tops up whenever you win this website.
And I'm a social media marketer. I do that for a living, part-time for the library district, and I know the value in that, and I see that, and I don't want to be the person that has to point it out, but the city of Poughkeepsie has a very robust communications department who constantly, weekly sends out an email newsletter with all the meeting agendas attached to it every week, what's coming up. They're seeking input from residents. It's something the planning board should consider, the Town Board should consider, you know? So, that way, people aren't finding out about projects. You know, I know that not everybody can check the website weekly to see what's going on or watch the YouTube videos because, you know, who wants to do that? So, you know, just trying to communicate better with the residents of the Poughkeepsie. That's what I'm asking. Thanks.
You don't re-watch all of the videos?
I don't. With the popcorn.
Yeah, it's a good point, and I just want to say also, we're starting an update of the new master plan of the town because it's been about 10 years, 10 to 12 years, so we'll certainly take... So we'll certainly take affordable housing under consideration as part of that new master plan and see where that leads to as far as zoning changes and whatnot. All right, we're back to this project. Any other comments? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing for site plan and subdivision for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Then we want to go around the board. I want to start with, with Liz tonight.
Okay.
As far as...
So, um, move over, Andy. Okay. So we did another round of review, working very closely with staff, and Mr. Cooper, and Anthony Russo, and Andy. So I did do a review memorandum. It is basically a list of the remaining comments. There were a couple of minor changes since the May 30 memorandum was issued. And I don't know if you want me to go over those or if the board is aware of those changes. We just, I'll just quickly...
Should we touch on it?
Page four of, oh, I'm Liz Axelson, CPL planner. Sorry about that. We did add some wording to page four, section E, comment number one. Basically to clarify, for example, this is all about the date that a certificate of occupancy is issued for the first 190,300 square feet, the trigger date. And I will touch on another bit of verbiage that should be added before the planning board acts. Anyway, we, we made clear reference to the site plan set in item one, little Roman numeral I at the end of that. And then in one little Roman numeral three, we added the phrase, or adaptive reuse. It is understood that demolition is shown on a plan, but if there's any chance of any adaptive reuse of, of either the north or south wings, it's, the wording is in there.
Didn't want to preclude it, right.
Right, didn't want to preclude that. Just in the header for comment one, what should have been added at the beginning, and this was brought to our attention by Mr. Wise, the date, it should read, the date that the last certificate of occupancy is issued for the first 193,300 square feet of non-residential floor area. And then it continues, for commercial uses on the site, I'm paraphrasing, by the applicant shall be known as the northern phase demolition trigger date. The following milestones shall apply. So that pretty much stays the same. Moving on to page two, item number seven, this comment had to do with a note on site plan A that had to do with payment of recreation fees. And you'll see that comment number seven is now kind of three paragraphs. And what I did was request a rewording of the entire note, having to do with a 63% recreation fee, paraphrasing again, prior to the issuance of the first residential building permit, the recreation fee of $151,200, based on $787 per bedroom fee, reduced from the full recreation fee of $1,250 per bedroom shall be paid.
I have an answer. That's yesterday.
And then, let's see. Then, there were some questions raised in regards to my comment on page seven. The header at the top of page seven is F, code review subdivision. This is comment number two. Now, just to be clear, comment number two originally, a couple memos ago, was about coming up with a draft outline of most of the elements of a master property owners association. We weren't looking for the actual instrument at this time. We know that that's a condition of approval. And so we did receive a very detailed outline based on the commentary. And the remaining comments are intended to elicit some clarification. In particular, Eric and I were discussing this earlier, there are places where, for example, sidewalk is in the road right of way and then moves on to a private lot and then back on to road right of way. And so we want to make sure that what we're covering are the responsibilities of the master property owners in regards to improvements in the road right of way as well as on their own lots, with the understanding ultimately that some aspects of each private lot will have items that the private lot owner will have to maintain themselves. And as Eric and I were discussing this today, one of the things I'll suggest moving forward as we're trying to address the conditions of approval will be to come up with kind of a table that shows us master homeowners, just, just for the purpose of outlining these things.
Even, even better, I think we need to set up a table with a set of the approved plans and go through them page by page, sheet by sheet. That's the only way to do it.
I think that is the way to do it. So anyway, I, I believe we have the outline that we need for the purposes of moving forward with conditions of approval. Those are the biggies. I don't think there was anything else I was supposed to touch on.
All right, thank you, Liz. Andy, we go to infrastructure.
Andy Lerner with CPL, planning board engineer. I guess I want to start off by saying that this is a very large undertaking, a huge set of plans, and I think project team has done a great job of pulling it together. And that being said, you know, we have, we still have a number of comments outstanding, but many of them are just details that need to be nailed down. I'm not going to go through all of them, obviously, but I'll hit on the high points specifically for site plan. We still need health department approval prior to, health department, prior to the planning board signature. There's some existing easements to the state for the sewer lines that run through the property that will need to be modified. We'll need to see some correspondence from them about how their approvals for those changes. We are also seeing the Winslow Gate Drive, Winslow Gate Road entrance is currently shown to straddle property line to the south. And as we've modified the, 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 the resolution, we need to have an idea of which way, how that's going to be resolved. We have a plan that shows that, that the road being moved on, fully on the property.
Yep.
And if that's the way it's gonna be, we'll, we'll just want the site plans revised to, to reflect that. And there are some other options available if, if that doesn't work for them. And then the only other thing I'm going to mention is that we have asked that the sewer and water districts be finalized prior to the first certificate of occupancy for, for, for the site. So it's all, all mentioned for now.
Makes sense. You need sewer and water before you can make it functional. Just a quick question to Marty. Did, did you have any further, you're still having conversations with the other property owner for that?
We haven't had any recently. No, we will get back on it. We focused on making sure that we have a viable alternative plan that is self-contained.
So the bases are, yeah, bases are covered.
Yeah, correct.
All right, thanks. Anything further, Andy? All right, thank you. At this point, let's see how we're doing with traffic monitoring mitigation with Marissa. Any, any comments for, hi?
Um, to summarize...
Any outstanding issues?
Yeah, Marissa Tralo with AKRF here for Anthony. Just to summarize what we've been going through quickly in case that helps anyone, we've gone through several rounds of revisions on the site plan specifically. The most recent comment memo is dated May 24th with a revision date of June 3rd, which just had a couple minor edits to tie together the finding statements with the site plans, with the traffic monitoring plan note being added to the site plan. Most of our comments at this point still just relate to signage, striping, minor details regarding pedestrian connectivity, and some emergency access, which is, is very minor. It's not major emergency access. It's some maneuverability. And those are part of the conditional approval that will be addressed. So we're comfortable with that. The monitoring plan is in place. The wording has been revised slightly to very much clarify when each mitigation measure will happen. But just as a reminder, the sensors are there. That monitoring takes place on an annual basis throughout the completion of the project. So should any levels of traffic trigger sooner rather than later, the mitigation measures are in place and would be used at that time to address any traffic issues. And then the last item just came up, I think recently for the board, is that the intersection of Hudson View Drive and Winslow Gate Road was a T-intersection, and it's now a roundabout.
Yes.
We've gone through signage and striping for that roundabout in accordance with New York State DOT's regulations, which really help with the safety and the accessibility for pedestrians, because there is connection through the roundabout. So we're very comfortable with its design at this point. Those would be the major changes to traffic, but I think we're at a point where our comments are very minor in, in handling striping and signage.
Okay, great. I see your list of conditions remaining. All right, thank you. Anything further from you, Eric?
Not at the time.
Okay, let me go around our planning board then. Let's start with Nicole here tonight.
Sure. So just to talk about the roundabout for a second, you guys talked about that you're going to be landscaping that. Do you have ideas as to how you are landscaping it? And we were also thrown back some ideas about possibly you reusing some historical pieces, and if there's any possible of putting some historical pieces within the roundabout, whatever they may be. Carl was actually the one that brought that up, the historical pieces.
Yes, I mean, you often see a clock in a roundabout or a sculpture or something that I didn't know if you, any of the keystones from the window or build an archway there from a window?
Not, not the electric chair.
Something just...
No, no, no. Just skip that one. But, you know, some architectural elements from the site or whatever is that might act as a gateway or, or whatever.
So the, the answer is, it has to be subject to the fire chief's approval as to what's in there, because they're very concerned about the mountability and roundabout. Having said that, yes, we're gonna come up with some, some, hopefully some landscaping and some architectural treatment that will be satisfactory to the fire department and attractive and, and nice.
Yeah, it has to be mountable or on edge, but right in the middle somewhere if there's some historical...
Yeah, there's all sorts of things that we can do, and we'll figure out something appropriate. Yes.
Sounds good.
And just the last one, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what the Dutch's planning and development stated, that the pylon sign should be more of a commercial strip.
What?
Kind of like one at the Galleria or like Woodbury Commons.
I'm sorry, the what?
The, the sign that you've, you've proposed.
The pylon sign?
Yes.
Monument, yep?
Yep. They were, their comment was their, it would be nice if it was more of like a commercial strip, such as what kind of like the Galleria has, where it kind of lists some of the things that they have, or, you know, not...
Less, less, less description of every little store than, than just more of a big sign. It's, here's, here's our project and come on in and see them.
Okay. I think we have a combination of the two, but we'll focus on that a little bit.
Okay. And that was it.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Let's see. Let's move on. Let me go to Bob at the end there.
Yeah, I think you mentioned earlier that you're proceeding to put a permanent roof on the administration building?
Correct.
So then you're convinced your ability to restore that building, that the structure is intact, and not that it's going to be cheap to do, but that you can restore it to some form of the original.
But, yes, as of now, our structural engineers have done reports and they believe it is. So based on that, we've had civil, the civil engineer, the structural engineer, and the architect work as a team to come up with the best way to put a new roof on, using the top floor as a structural base. They're pretty much, they're wrapping that up now. And then we're hoping to proceed with it. So our plan is to put the roof on, make it watertight, put windows back in and, and make it, you know, presentable and watertight.
Is that early on in the construction?
I think it's gonna have to be. And we have interested parties to the left of it and the right of it, and really can't see anyone occupying until that building is watertight. In fact, the, the marketing materials that we send out to prospective users basically say that we understand that that has to be a, a condition. No one's gonna really occupy it until, occupy to the left or the right of it until that building is attended to.
Okay, that's great. Anything further? All right, Rocco.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank all, all you people and your teams, because you've done a, a lot of work here, of course, with our people as well. And I wish you luck with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rocco. Joe?
I would just echo Rocco's sentiment, and I'm just looking forward to seeing the project move forward.
Thank you.
Here you go to Ben.
Keep, keeping with the same vein, I feel, I know this is a huge project, one of the biggest ones we've had in the town, but I feel comfortable with all the efforts put in by the town staff, engineers, CPL, AKRF, and any others involved, and the applicant for acknowledging, being sensitive to the comments made by the public. And I'm not going to get into little details, but I think it's a great thing. And I think you're doing a good job, everybody, and good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. And Peter?
I had asked for, some time ago, for the agreement for the, the Master Property Owners Association. We got a letter from you, which really fleshed that out and gave us a good sense of where you're headed. So that was very helpful. For an HOA, you need to go to the Attorney General. Do you need to do that?
This, this kind of association is not a, by definition, a public offering. So it's, right, so it doesn't require AG approval.
Okay. But that's a very good start. Thank you. When I was looking at the, the town engineers' comments, I, I, I'm sure it's buried in there somewhere under a notation for a document that you have received. But we had had a discussion with the applicant's engineer with regard to the burying and place of underground utilities and a, and a plan for that, for that project. Do you have something like, is that in your notes somewhere?
So there, on the demolition plans, or the, the, it calls out all the different pipes that are in place now. And the, there are notes on the plan that describe this, how pipes could, will be abandoned based on the size of the pipe, whether it's crushed in place, captain remain, captain to remain in place, or filled with, with fallible material so that it...
So there's detail in the plan?
Yes.
Since we don't really know, I'm not sure if anyone really knows what's under there, my concern primarily is for the streets that are going to be dedicated to the town so that we don't have any surprises if there could be some language in that that more or less the effect, including but not limited to water, sewer, electric and so forth, so that we are covered in case there were any surprises.
I think the note, the way that the note is written, it applies to all types of utilities, if that's what you mean. So it also, it also specifically says with regard to the steam tunnels that they will be removed completely within the town right of way.
All right, terrific. Okay, good. Finally, we've had this discussion in the past. This is, this is, district is called Historic Revitalization Development District. The language of the district was, the, the district was constructed whereby there is a quid pro quo here between bonuses that are allocated to the developer in return for remediation and renovation. My concern is that the, really, something we've discussed before about the northern phase demolition trigger date, 193,300 square feet, developer is obligated to ground secure bond to start the demolition on the main, the north and south wings of the median. the north and south wings of the main administration building. My concern is that that is not, is self-enforceable. In other words, it's really up to the developer, the developer has the option to billing one hundred ninety-three thousand square feet and would assume no obligation to go forward with the bond. My suggestion was to put a time element in there, one hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred square feet, or say eighteen months, whichever comes first, so that we would have, there would be an element of enforcement where the way it's constructed now, the agreement between the town, the town board and the developer, leaves the enforcement solely up to the discretion of the developer. And since the bond, really, we're talking about mitigation, which I think is part of the secret process, that bond was really set forth as a safety net so that mitigation would be insured. And I'd like to know if the developer would be willing to agree to attaching that eighteen month or whatever time he feels comfortable with that we could entertain as an attachment to that trigger date. No, I'm sorry. Unless anyone here could tell me with a crystal ball when we'll lease up the one hundred ninety-three thousand, I can't commit a time period associated with it. We've clarified and said that we need to be a hundred percent complete and successful on every square foot of this development in order to come out of this with a profit. And that's an enormous risk as it is. Our equity commitment has already been doubled, so we want to make sure that we can get through phase one and recycle the funds, the construction, by converting phase one into, from a construction loan into a permanent loan, which gives us wherewithal to proceed thereafter. Based on your best estimate? May I just finish? So that's our plan and I've also told you that our plans are being accelerated. I never anticipated going into doing, cleaning up and putting a roof on the administration building. It's a very big number, yet it's a requirement that we realistically have to have. And similarly, because we already have interested parties in the left to admin and the right, we most likely are going to be demolishing those much more quickly, which is to our mutual benefit, at least it's to our benefit. So we are highly motivated to proceed as quickly as we can to take those buildings down, because only then can we put the new buildings up. But I just don't have a timeframe as to when that will happen. I could honestly tell you in good faith and show you that we have letters of intent out for pads on the left and pads on the right at this time. So I would assume, I'm hoping, that it could be much, very soon, but I just don't have any ability to tell you and commit to it. What's your best estimate of what the bond would cost?
It's not the bond because there is no such thing as, from a developer's perspective, a bond is a hundred percent cash collateralized. So if it's a million dollar bond, it's a million dollars more of cash. It's not, we're not a quote contractor that has a performance, payment and performance bond that's tied to a multiple of their cash. If I was a contractor and I had a hundred dollars, I can get a million dollar bond and so on and so forth. We're not a contractor, so everything is cash collateralized.
Well, the bond goes to mitigation without any assurance that the bond will ever be posted. I'm not, I'm not going to vote for this.
Any other comments, Peter?
No.
Anything further from you, David, about this? I know we've discussed, I think the developer has shared some financials with you.
On the.
On the project and the trigger date.
Well, we've discussed it before, but the purpose of the trigger date, and Peter and I have discussed it offline, so he knows, I've summarized it, but just so that the press of the board is clear, the purpose of the trigger date initially was to address the concern at the time of the original development back before the town board that, which proposed three hundred fifty thousand square feet of commercial all in phase one at the bottom of the hill, bottom of the hill, that should the developer at the time just walk away with the three hundred fifty thousand square feet of commercial built, which at the time was mostly, you know, was dominated by a big box store and would be another commercial, you know, sort of depot right next to the Home Depot, that there would at least be some guarantee that the wings would be demolished so that if they were to walk away at three hundred fifty thousand square feet of commercial, that at least the top of the hill would also be relatively cleaned up, quote unquote, so that it would be attractive for somebody, for another developer to come in. At the time, again, all, the residential was on top of the hill and the commercial was all at the bottom of the hill and there wasn't as much integration. Now with the new proposal, although there is three hundred fifty thousand square feet of commercial in total proposed, it's not all at the bottom of the hill and also there's no longer a big box store proposed and there's now a Main Street commercial corridor and more interconnectivity, et cetera. So the impact that was identified at the town board level with respect to a developer walking away with just the commercial being built is changed drastically from what we were looking at. With respect to the security, the town board or the town itself and the developer were looking to find a balance between creating enough or allowing enough flexibility in the development for the developer to create or build enough successful square footage such that it would, it would be financially viable to undertake the demolition up top. And that trigger, that two hundred thousand square foot trigger that was identified back by the town board kind of balanced the two of finding that kind of quote unquote sweet spot of when there would be enough successful development and also ensure that you would have an integrated development or at least a clean site so that somebody could come in and finish off the residential. So obviously, the concern is a lot different now because, one, you have that integrated development and even if phase one is completed in and of itself, you have a much different development.
More next use than.
Right.
I have to say, I respectfully disagree that there's still, even with the shift in development, there's nothing to prevent, and I'm not predicting that this would happen, but there's nothing to prevent the developer from still building one hundred ninety-three thousand square feet, one hundred thirty-four apartments and still walking away from the project.
If I may, yeah, if I may, the projections, the financial performer that we've given, David, is the same that we've given our lender. It shows that as of now, we have fifteen million dollars cash invested, which we have to increase to twenty-eight million dollars to satisfy my construction loan. If I successfully complete all of phase one and I sell it, the, all the one hundred ninety-three thousand and the one hundred thirty-four multifamily units, I will still have a loss of twelve and a half, thirteen million dollars. I think that was the number. If I wanted to take that loss, I can do it today and then take my, save myself, you know, three years, two, three years of effort. I don't need to build the one hundred ninety-three just to lose the same amount of money. So my commitment, as I said, and we've shown your attorney, we have to complete all of the north in order to have an opportunity to recoup our investment and make profits on this development. That's just the reality of it and that's what we've signed up to do.
All right, thanks for your comments.
I hope that you would consider that and vote positive.
Any other?
I have, you know, sitting on this side of the table where I have a fiduciary responsibility and I see that there's a, there's a critical flaw in an agreement, there's no way I could possibly support it. We just have a difference of opinion.
Any further comments from anyone? Do I hear any motions?
I move that the planning board adopt the resolution adopting secret findings for the Hudson Heritage Project as prepared by town planning and consultants.
Second? Moved and seconded to adopt secret findings. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one.
I move that the planning board adopt the resolution approving the modified development master plan for the Hudson Heritage Project as prepared by town planning staff and town consultants.
Second? So moved and seconded to adopt the resolution approving the modified development master plan. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to zero, six to one, sorry.
I move that the planning board adopt the resolution of conditional approval of a preliminary, preliminary major subdivision layout for the Hudson Heritage product, project as prepared by town planning staff and town consultants.
Second? Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one.
I move that the planning board adopt the resolution of conditional site plan approval for phase one of the Hudson Heritage Project as prepared by town planning staff and town consultants.
Second? Moved and seconded for conditional of phase one site plan. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for tonight. And again, I want to just give my thanks to all our town consultants and planning staff as well as the developer for his responsive feedbacks on all the issues over the past few months. We've gone back and forth many times. We still have a pile of conditions to satisfy before we sign the plans, so good luck getting through all that and appreciate you for taking on this task in our town.
Thank you. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for one moment, it's almost four years to the day since the town board declared its intent to be lead agency for this project. It's been an awful lot of hard work by everybody sitting here, people sitting behind me, our own team. It's been a very, very collaborative process, disagreements notwithstanding, even tonight, it's been a very collaborative process and we very much look forward to bringing this exciting project to fruition.
Appreciate you that you continue to work with the historical society as well and get the photographs and.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support. Appreciate it and we will be back to you with more specifics as we go forward.
I'm sure you'll be coming back with architectural as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Congratulations.
Your late birthday. Do I hear any other motions?
Motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thanks, everybody.